Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, April 16, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. I'd like to call this meeting into order. Karen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Broderick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Morales?
Present.
Trustee Stan Borsky?
Present.
Trustee Queenie?
Present.
Trustee Bazinski?
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum.
As we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting will be conducted in accordance with Board Policy 01.45.00, Meetings of the Board and Robert's Rules of Order. Our attorney, Brian Kotman, will serve as a parliamentarian to ensure the meeting proceeds professionally. You'll notice that we do have a staff member present to assist with time management. Per policy, each trustee will have three minutes to speak and two minutes for rebuttal, with continuous time observed and only one speaker holding the floor at a time. In alignment with Board Policy 01.03.00, I encourage everyone to maintain civility and respect even when expressing different opinions. This commitment to civility is essential to fostering productive and respectful discussions. Item 1.3, Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like our trustee-elect Elaine Bottomley to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item 1.2, Communications, Kelly Roder-Tinelli.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Namua and members of the JJC community. Just a few weeks ago, actually on April 2, JJC recognized World Autism Day by hosting a roundtable event in partnership with Illinois State Representative Natalie Manley. We want to again extend our sincere thanks to Representative Manley for her leadership in this area. Since her election to the Illinois House back in 2013, she's just consistently brought unwavering energy and passion for our state residents and particularly for our college, and it really has made a meaningful difference. It's also wonderful to call her a JJC alum. So, this roundtable that we held, which Dr. Namua provided a wonderful welcome for, provided a valuable forum to address several key topics: common misconceptions, barriers to accessing services, effectiveness of current support programs, et cetera. And what I really thought was so special about this moment was that I really saw it kind of policy and pedagogy working hand in hand to drive progress. And so, the panel featured just a broad range of perspectives. We had parents of students with autism, we had teachers, we had JJC staff and students, we had representatives from Cornerstone Services and Disability Resource of Joliet. So, it was a really robust and important conversation. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our Director of Disability Services, Adam Woke, who with me helped spearhead and lead and coordinate this effort with Representative Manley's team. Adam could not be here tonight because he is coaching his daughter's first T-ball game, so, good excuse, right? But tonight, I've got two people who are critical in this conversation who will come and address you this evening and talk more about the critical importance of just this event, but our partnership overall. Jen Donthers, Special Education Educator at Plainfield High School, has spent the last 25 years collaborating with families and school teams to identify goals, provide support, and help students and their families navigate the transition from college to employment. Colleen Uremovic, Disability Services Specialist at JJC, is a member of the college's DEI Subcommittee and is currently completing her master's degree in education policy, organization, and leadership with a concentration in diversity and equity in education. So with that, please join me in welcoming Jen and Colleen.
Thank you so much, everyone, for having me. Always love coming here. I was actually just telling everybody that I have this beautiful relationship with JJC and JJC Disability Services that oftentimes when I'm in meetings, I have to tell parents that I really don't work for JJC, that I receive zero commission for bringing students in. So with that said, I just wanted to thank you for having me. I think during our conversation, the biggest focus were challenges that individuals who are neurodiverse face. The biggest thing I think that we didn't talk about was I think that not only do individuals face challenges, but I also think often these individuals are misunderstood. As we know, being misunderstood leads to low representation, not only in higher education, but then that leads to also low representation in the workforce. I think that's a problem. As we all know, if we look around, there are several colleges starting programs specifically for students or individuals with autism, and the reason for this is because specific needs need to be met. And I really do believe in JJC. I believe that you are at the forefront of a lot, especially for being a smaller school. I feel that way about Plainfield. I'm very proud of where I'm at. And I believe that if these academic supports that include mentoring, executive functioning training, social skills training, counseling, and coaching, and also component of job internship, and that does not only help individuals, but it helps our community members start to understand that the talent that they're missing. I'm going to leave you with this. The beauty about my job is I get to hear from students, former students. I had a student recently reach out to me, and he said to me, "I'm having a tough time." He came from JJC, he actually did super well, transferred high academic honors. He said to me, "I can't find a job." He said, "Employers can't see past me." On the other end, and him not being able to see me, I felt broken for him. I mean, how many of us have been through interviews and we've cycled through, knowing that we're going to get a chance one day, and this individual doesn't believe he's ever going to get a chance because this is a part of who he is? So I'm going to leave you with that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Uremovic, and my pronouns are she/her. As we acknowledge Autism Acceptance Month, I am grateful for the opportunity to update you on the impactful initiatives that Disability Services has undertaken to support the autism community during this month and beyond. On World Autism Acceptance Day, April 2, Disability Services hosted multiple successful events, all featuring a sensory room courtesy of JJC's Disability Awareness Club. The day began with the roundtable discussion involving State Representative Natalie Manley and key community stakeholders. From students to parents to social workers, we had a large representation of individuals involved in the autism community. This event fostered meaningful dialogue and collaboration, emphasizing the importance of continued advocacy and support for individuals with autism. One of the most impactful portions of the day was the student panel, where JJC students with autism shared their experiences and their insights. The panel provided a platform for these students to voice their perspectives and facilitated valuable connections between panelists and audience. The engagement and interaction during this session underscored the power of community and the importance of inclusivity. Additionally, we held a meeting for our weekly social skills series on that same day, which has been a valuable resource for supporting students with autism and other disabilities. These meetings are designed to enhance the social competencies of individuals with autism, providing them with tools and strategies to navigate social situations more effectively. These students are looking forward to putting these skills into practice as we go out into public during our capstone project this month, which is 100% funded by donations. We currently do not have enough resources to consistently provide the wraparound services that can help our students with autism excel, to ensure the continuation and expansion of these valuable initiatives. We need more funding to promote programming. We hope that JJC sees this as an opportunity to develop a deeper partnership with Disability Services and the community, enabling us to continue planning more programs that foster acceptance, understanding, and empowerment for individuals with autism and other disabilities. Thank you for your attention and support.
Thank you.
Item 1.3.1, Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. Dr. Carol Brooks.
Members of the Board of Trustees and those in attendance at this evening's meeting, both physically and virtually, it gives me great pleasure to introduce JJC student Yul Hawangbo, who has graciously agreed to read the JJC proclamation, which recognizes the month of May 2025 as the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Before Yul reads the proclamation, I'd like to share a little bit about him. Yul is a JJC student in his first semester here. He is studying economics and is a high school graduate of the Illinois Math and Science Academy. He is currently a student employee with the International Student Services Office in the Center for Multicultural Access and Success Department. Yul has worked as an analyst for the non-for-profit Stop AAPI Hate. In his free time, Yul enjoys collecting sneakers, playing golf, and spending time with his two dogs. I humbly present to all of you JJC student Yul Hawangbo.
Whereas the citizens of the Asian and Pacific Islander ancestry comprise a percentage of residents of Illinois Community College District Number 525, and whereas the contributions of the citizens of the Asian and Pacific Islander ancestry to the history and culture of the United States are invaluable and abundant, and whereas it is the goal of Joliet Junior College to provide its students with a comprehensive co-curricular and curricular educational experience, with consideration given to the contributions of all socially identifiable groups within Asian history and culture. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 2525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois hereby proclaim the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and Illinois Community College District Number 525 adopted this 16th day of April 2025.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 1.4, Recognition of Retirement. 1.41, Sharon Valentino, Dr. Amy Gray.
Thank you very much. I would like to share a little bit about Dr. Sharon Valentino, who is retiring from JJC after almost 15 years of teaching pediatric nursing at JJC in the Department of Nursing. She has dedicated her time, talent, and heart shaping the lives of future nurses, inspiring colleagues, and strengthening our community through her work at the Will County Health Department. Her passion for education, commitment to excellence, and unwavering support for students and those around her have left a legacy for years to come. There are countless ways that she's made a difference here at JJC. Sharon is looking forward to retiring and having more time to spend with her grandbabies, and she's had such a remarkable career here at JJC, we are all definitely going to miss her. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to call for a motion to second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 1.5, Public Comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
Chairman Bazinski, tonight we have Luke Galloway from, he's a JJC student, who's here to talk about the relationship between the students and the school administration. As a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during its monthly board meetings. Per Policy 015501, the purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the board on agenda items. Keep in mind that comments should be in good taste and please demonstrate consideration from others. Please refrain from inappropriate, irrelevant, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Thank you for following this procedure.
Thank you. Hello, JJC community, President Namua, the esteemed board. Today, I stand at this podium at the precipice of a very important moment. It was at this spot in November that a young student activist stood, just like this, and gave the passionate inaugural address for a pro-student movement, a paradigm shift in the way that we talk about students, that prompted you as trustees to pledge your support. At one point last semester, I was writing a speech about the history of student activism, where the central thesis was essentially this: Student activism has been a positive force for pushing social and political change, especially present day. Keep that in mind. Today, I have the privilege to do something else, to be the first student in living memory, so far as I can tell, to publicly and personally acknowledge the outgoing student trustee. Trustee Queenie, you are a symbol of student activism and advocacy for our school, as well as statewide. When we first met, you were the president of Pride Alliance, and in that short time to today, I want to be the first to acknowledge how much you've grown personally and professionally. The strength of your leadership, your passionate engagement around campus, will not go unrecognized. I think a lot of the people even here today are unaware of all that you've accomplished as our student trustee, so I'd like to list some things that stood out to me. You unified the students, uplifted student voices. You unwaveringly supported the students, even under pressure. As student trustee with your project and as part of the Illinois Community College Board, you promoted educational equity in the state. We went to Springfield and we advocated for community college baccalaureate degrees. You promoted social and support needs of lower-income and unhoused students with OSRR, something I want you to know means a lot to me personally. You've shaped this college in incredible ways, all of the above, and also so many other intangible things: the way you show up for everything, the way you show up for every student on this campus, the way you've shown up for me. And on a personal note, what your time as student trustee has meant to me. I've been here for three years, and you were the best student trustee of my tenure. No disrespect, of course, to trustees Stan Borsky or Ayesha. I truly believe that. And trustees, the personification of student activism, more than what me and my fellow students accomplished standing at this podium, sits across the room from me. And from my perspective, this is the proof. The people sitting around this round dais acknowledge the students. I know for every public comment that I was privileged enough to give, the real battle was waged privately in every conversation, in every closed session, when you stood up for all students on this campus. The students won. The students always win. We won on April 1. Two out of three of the people elected our pro-student voices, and the students will keep winning. Thank you, and I yield the floor.
Thank you, Luke.
I'd like to make a quick comment. Thank you so much also, trustee Queenie, because you've also shown up for me on so many different levels, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Sorry.
Item 1.6, A Moment of Silence. Dr. Namua.
Chairman Bazinski and trustees of the board and members of the JJC community, I'm asking college community to join me in a moment of silence for the following individuals: Siskosis Naros, husband of Mary Sisneros in our nursing department; Irene Vasalades, mother-in-law of Sandy Vasalades, our admissions specialist; Marvin Salado, JJC retiree in our maintenance and facilities area; and Lisa Hackett, sister of Helen Barker, office assistant in our OSA department.
Can I add Staff Sergeant Dunias, that was killed abroad in an accident, and his body was flown in today.
Thank you, Dr. Namua. Item 1.7, Selected Reports. 1.7.1, the ACCT GLI Report. Alicia Morales, Diane Harris, and Nancy Garcia-Guian.
Sure.
Oh, okay, these are my notes, too. All right. So, we attended the Governance Leadership Institute Conference in Hawaii, and we learned quite a bit. Actually, I'm really glad that I got to go because the areas that I'm going to be reporting on are going to be on what I learned as a board chair, building trust through effective communication, elevating the board with communications pertaining to presidential communications. So, the case study highlights the importance of transparent and structured communications between human resources, HR, and the college board, especially regarding complaints, or if there's a crisis involving senior leadership, whether it be with the president or it be with the board, right? So, there has to be a complaint pathway, and all complaints are initially reviewed by human resources, and if it's deemed significant, then HR will then escalate them to the board. If there are complaints regarding board members, then the complaints are directed at board members, and independent third-party investigations should be conducted to ensure neutrality. In case there's, you know, leadership crisis example, at a case at another institution involved a case where a president with suspiciously high full-time equivalent credit numbers raising ethical, budgetary, and accreditation issues in that situation, and in that situation, HR initiated a third-party investigation, the president was placed on administrative leave and an interim president was then appointed. The board faced key decisions whether to terminate and separate the president, continue with an interim leader, or initiate a transparent search for a permanent president. And to be honest with you, these are courageous conversations that we have to go through in situations that have happened at other colleges, right? These could potentially happen. So what if it happened here? Like, how would we handle that? We hope that that never happens, but as board leaders, governing leaders of this institution, we have to be ready and we have to attend these conferences to actually, you know, role-play and hear what other, maybe more senior trustees have gone through and, you know, get information from ACCT on how to handle these situations. So then, following through with the presentation, the board considered engaging an external consultant. In this case, we can always hire the Association of Community College Trustees, ACCT, to assist to ensure that there's a fair and open process when dealing with situations like that. Some of the best practice recommendations are to clarify and formalize complaint procedures, and we do that by developing a clear protocol for handling complaints specifying what is HR's role in the initial review. We need to specify thresholds for board escalation, automatic use of third-party investigators for high-level complaints, president or board members. And we also need to ensure all trustees understand the process to maintain consistency and fairness. And we should also be strengthening our communication and trust as board members. We do that, we have to commit to transparent, timely communication between HR, board leadership, legal counsel during sensitive investigations as well, and maintain confidentiality. It's very important, we always maintain confidentiality where required, but provide appropriate updates to maintain board cohesion and trust, because people can only move at the speed of trust, and that's going to reflect when we bring onboard our new trustee at the next meeting. We're going to have to continue to add a new board member and continue to build that trust. We also need to utilize independent investigations at times and mandate a third-party investigations for complaints involving the president or board members to ensure impartiality and integrity. We need to establish relationships with vetted external investigators in advance to expedite the process if needed. Leadership transition strategy, we need to have that also. So, when a president is placed on leave, which we know that probably that's not going to happen here, right? So, immediately, we have to appoint a qualified interim president to maintain operational continuity. Begin, we need to begin preparing for a permanent search regardless of interim performance to uphold openness and fairness, and we need to consider external expertise such as ACCT to guide the search process and avoid internal bias or pressures. We should also uphold board governance principles, emphasize the board's fiduciary and ethical responsibilities during leadership transitions, ensure that all decisions are in the best interest of the institution's long-term reputation, accreditation, and especially student success. I think we can move on to the next slide. Okay, so then, in terms of the trustee's role in the president evaluation, that was another workshop that we also attended, and goal-setting process. So, trustees play an important role in shaping the college's direction through the evaluation and goal-setting process for the president. To ensure that this process is collaborative, transparent, and aligned with institutional priorities, the following approach is recommended. We need to encourage thoughtful input without personal agendas. You know, we all run for office to be public servants, and we're volunteers basically because we're not paid, but everyone decides to put, go through all this work of running a campaign, like Ms. Bottomley knows exactly. There's a reason she wants to be part of this board, as all of us do, but we can't join a board and have, you know, self-serving agendas, and sometimes that's the case, right? And so, when we're going through the president's evaluation, we should never come onboard with our own agenda. It should always be to serve the student and/or the college. So while individual trustees may have strong ideas or a personal vision for the college, it's critical that input into the presidential evaluation and goal-setting process does not come across as self-serving or driven by individual agendas. Instead, contributions should reflect the broader needs of the institution and its students. We need to, there is a process. We need to funnel ideas through board leadership, right? Especially for newer trustees. Trustees should bring their ideas and vision to the board executive committee, which would be the chairman, the vice chair, and our secretary, for preliminary discussion. This provides a structured and respectful channel for input, allowing leadership to identify common themes and prepare for a productive full-board discussion. We also need to facilitate a closed session for a goal prioritization. Once all trustees have submitted their input, the full board should hold a closed session meeting to review and consolidate ideas, prioritize key themes and institutional needs, align the proposed goals with the college's strategic plan. So they always are, it's a spin-off of the strategic plan and the college's mission, as well as ensure a unified board voice before presenting expectations to the president. And we should also focus on student-centered, outcome-driven goals. All presidential goals should clearly prioritize student success, equity, and measurable outcomes. The goals should be rooted in the strategic plan, again, achievable within the scope of the presidential leadership, designed to drive institutional effectiveness and informed by data such as retention, completion, enrollment, and workforce outcomes. Today, we heard about students that are struggling to find a job and their special needs. There's students that don't have special needs, and they're also struggling to find work, so that's definitely something that, you know, we can help set at this level. We also present a unified board perspective as one collective board. Once this is finalized, the board, through the chairman, should present the agreed-upon goals to the president. This unified approach reinforces trust, accountability, and clarity in the board president relationships. By following a structured, student-focused, and collaborative process, trustees can ensure the presidential evaluation and goal-setting process supports the success of both the president and the institution, free from personal bias and grounded in shared priorities. So those are the workshops that I attended for this conference, and actually, being on the president's evaluation committee, this is really helping me to streamline and better structure the following evaluation process that we're going to be doing, and it just prepares us to be better qualified and better prepared board members. So, I yield back my time. Thank you so much. Any questions, anybody? Maybe after the presentation, we can entertain questions. Thank you.
Item 1.7.2, the Faculty Union Report.
Wait.
Nancy, did I get that?
Oh, I didn't know that.
We're staring you up. We apologize. We, as part of the actual conference that we were part of, it was a two-day conference, and we learned a lot of different information, so the way that we broke it up is we focus on different sections, so that way you all are not hearing the same information from us three, but information that we took away from specific sections. So I'll be focusing on section four, five, and six. Again, I'll go ahead and provide some high-level information for those particular sections, but before I jump into this particular one, this opportunity is part of our professional development, and it allows us to be able to put into practice things that we already know, get a reminder on things that we want to practice in a different way, and also learn from other trustees across the state, across different states, across the United States. And also, something that I found really interesting, interesting that I was not fully aware before this conference, is that a lot of colleges are this conference, is that a lot of colleges are, they have a process to, there, we have trustees that are elected, but there's also a process to appoint trustees specifically from the governor. So that's a different dynamic or a different structure than what we are used to here, but it is something that other states and other colleges do that was really interesting. And again, we got to meet new people, we got to talk about best practices, and also hear some of the challenges that they're facing, and also some of the potential solutions that they're going through in order to address those particular challenges. So for Section 4, this one was what trustees need to know about Board governance. This one specifically focused on giving us all a reminder that as a Board, our job is to drive policy and not be involved in the day-to-day operations. That's something that, as trustees, we should not be necessarily instructing staff members, anyone, to do anything for us or the rest of the trustees, but we have one really important role, that, that is to work with our President in order to make sure that things are happening at the college, and making sure that everything is running smoothly, so just a reminder. And one other thing that we receive a reminder for this particular section, and again, is some of the things that we have in our book, all the way to the front, we have our model standards of good practice for trustees, for trustee boards. So this is one of the components that stood out for this particular section, is that at the end of the day, regardless of who voted for who, we are still accountable to the entire community, the entire district, and we should be able to behave to the highest level, represent the college to the best of our capacity, and again, be accountable to the entire student body and the community in the decisions that we're making, in any policy changes that we're making that is going to affect our students. Let's go ahead and go to the next one, please.
You have a clicker.
Oh, I have a clicker. Yes. Okay, I have a clicker. Section 5 is Board Ethics and How to Work with Challenging Board Members. This one was really interesting. One of the things that I appreciated is that we were able to do case studies, and we were able to work a lot in our small groups, and be able to share a little bit of information. So we had a few different case studies about things that are happening across, this is, those case studies were not connected to a particular college necessarily, but there are things that happen across the United States, on our Board, that could be connected somehow. So for this particular, particular section, I was able to share some of the best practices, and also share a little bit about some of the challenges that colleges face, that we're facing, that we're working through, and it was also really powerful to hear on how other colleges are addressing different challenges. For this one, in terms of Board Ethics, we focus a lot on making sure that we are showing up, and making sure that we keep in mind what our role is, connected to the last section, about making sure that we're driving policy, so this was really, a really good section. We have a lot of notes, and I'll make sure that I share it with the rest of my trustees. Let's go ahead, and I can move it by myself. Right here, this one is, again, a lot of this information, we already have it in our book, but this is a good reminder. Again, focusing on ethical behavior, as trustees, we must make sure that we are exemplifying ethical behavior at all times, and again, if we're representing students and we are up here or in the community, we need to be working effectively and making sure that we are behaving up to the best standard that we can as individuals, but also collectively. And also, we focus for this particular section on how to work together, again, to drive policy, and how it is super-important that as individuals, and more importantly, as a Board of trustees, that we're making sure that we are supporting the strategic plan of the institution, and making sure that we are being ambassadors out in the community and providing information to the general community of all the wonderful resources and programs that we have at the institution. And then, Section 6, it is what trustees need to know about advocacy and higher education. Again, for this particular section, it focuses on making sure that we're staying up to date on different things that are happening at the federal level, but also at the local level, at the state level, and then the local level, because all of that impacts the way that we're able to deliver the best resources, the best information, and also how we manage different situations to make sure that our students are receiving the resources that they might need in order to do well in their education. And, again, this is a reminder that the authority that the Board has is collective, we don't have just one person that is making the decisions for the Board, but at the end of the day, going back to the beginning of what I mentioned at the start of this presentation, is that we should be advocating for the entire community, we should be making sure that we're representing our students well, and we are working with, with the President and the Cabinet and other elected officials in order to make sure that we're driving policy that is going to be meaningful, impactful, and crucial for the development of our students. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and pass it on to Trustee Harris.
As Trustee Garcia mentioned, there were 10 sessions, we attended all of them, but we broke them up between each of us, and so I'll be discussing, well, actually, I won't be getting into this one too deeply, because the presenter for it was Dr. Namuwo from our college, and there was another presenter, Dr. Kristi Wellington Baker, and the topic was Strategic Planning and Cultural Innovation. And she was from, let's see, it doesn't say that, Higher Education Strategy Lead for the Student Experience, Amazon Web Services. So the reason why I put Joliet Junior College there is because, again, our speaker was Dr. Namuwo, and the Dr. Wellington Baker focused on Amazon, so those were the two speakers for Strategic Planning and Cultural Innovations. Dr. Namuwo highlighted, let me click that, yes, Dr. Namuwo highlighted our great accomplishments and focused on our strategic plan, and discussed how successful things have been for our college and students, and also everyone had a chance to share in the aloha moment, I'm sure you'll talk about that, too, and, yeah, so I'm just gonna leave that part for, for our President. But I will go into, but everybody's familiar with our strategic plan and our great accomplishments, but I just kinda noted them there. But anyway, Dr. Kristi Wellington focused on Amazon Web Services and their leadership principles. So what they, what she discussed was how their customer obsession and these leadership principles are driving factors of how Amazon is so successful, and how they want to be able to utilize this in interview processes when they're trying to hire students, and whatever it is in the hiring process. So these are some of the, well, actually, the leadership principles for Amazon, customer obsession, to be obsessed with the customer, ownership, everybody owns the, the part of the company. And are right a lot, meaning that you are wrong a lot as well, but you can be right as well, learn and be curious, and the bias for action means taking action on every individual thing. Invent and simplify, insist on the highest standards, strive to be Earth's best employer, hire and develop the best, think big, frugality, earn trust, that was what they focused on quite a bit, and I think someone already said that, that you can't move forward without the trust factor, so earning trust in any relationship is, is, is what is key. Dive deep into whatever it is you're planning, deliver the results, have the backbone, disagree, commit, success and scale, bring broad responsibility, and I didn't have it listed on here, but it also mentioned, and don't be afraid to admit mistake, because that allows you to move forward. Also talked about the one-way or two-way door, and, and that, as a Board, we can really focus on that, it's very important, because when we take a look at the decisions that we have to make for our students, we wanna make sure that the, that we have, that we have given everything a thought. Is this a one-way or a two-way? Can we, can we go back and change our decision? Is it reversible? Is it irreversible? The one-way door is, if it's irreversible, the stakes are high, requires deep analysis, the Board and stakeholder input, we have to get that right. Now, if it's a two-way door, it is reversible, the stakes are lower, we can make decisions quickly but encouraged, empower individuals or small teams, and, and test and adjust, but the key is to make the decision and make sure that we're making it with the students and our college's priority. Okay, succession planning for the Board, navigating the leadership pipeline. Now, I thought this was rather interesting, because they were trying to share with us how to prepare for a new Board. We need a clear, transparent policy for replacing Board members, whether it's due to election outcomes, resignations, or death. This ensures continuity and stability in governance. The onboarding should be beyond logistics, it should set clear expectations. A strong process might include pre-appointment interviews, post-appointment orientation, clear communication of time, commitment, duties, and decision-making scope. Could give the candidate a realistic preview of the Board responsibilities before they commit, because they may not know what they're really getting into. That was a lot, they discussed that quite a bit, about trying to make sure that when candidates decide to run, what, what's in store for them, not that we're endorsing anyone, but we're just letting them know, well, this is what the Board expects. And then this, also, it reduces misunderstanding and increases engagement. Now, every college will have a slightly different approach, especially where members are appointed versus elected, and we, we talked in depth about the elected, the elected trustees as opposed to the appointed trustees and their responsibilities, and their, yeah, responsibilities are, are the same, but they're different in terms of how they're guided, so that was something that I felt very interesting. But our policy should reflect those in a sense, and we should make sure that what we're doing reflects Joliet Junior College and its missions and its goals. Okay, now, this was Board Role During Crises, and I'm sure everybody remembers that picture. We, they talked about how the Board should handle a crisis, and I also remember that, I remember that our, Dr. Namuwo and his cabinet were, were right on time with everything. Other organ, other colleges were talking about and sharing, like, Trustee Morales, like Trustee Morales said, that, you know, they were talking about what they did, and some of them had not been successful, but I just wanted to say I was proud to, to, to realize that your teeth, Dr. Namuwo's cabinet, was very successful in navigating this crisis that we had at the downtown branch. For the Board's part, we were to be, they shared that we should be visible, calm, and united, uphold governance and accountability, and monitor the financial health and sustainability, and which we did, we were here at the meeting to, to approve the dollars that you needed to, to spend to move forward with the project, and ensure transparent communication, and stay focused on the mission and long-term vision, and we, I was proud to, to know that we did that, and we were happy that, that our JJC is always in the lead, so thank you for that. And then, I think this was the last one, Best Practices of Highly Effective Boards, Roles and Responsibilities, we have to, okay, everyone should know their lane and the clear roles to avoid the confusion. Every decision should support the college's mission and long-term vision. Effective Boards stay out of daily operations and focus on the big strategy, and I believe that was already mentioned. Trust, respect, and open communication are key to a healthy relationship. Welcoming different perspectives leads to better decisions. Great Boards are always learning about governance, trends, and higher education, so I look forward to our next trip, and I will conclude with this. Wait a minute, now. Now, I don't have to click it, I, I need to click this. How do I click on that? Oh. That's it. We were on a tour bus heading, heading back, I believe, back to the hotel, and I just wanted that, to close on that, and we had a wonderful time.
Yeah, we did.
And I thought that would just bring a little Hawaii to, to Illinois.
I already miss it, yeah.
Are you gonna say that word for us?
Mahalo.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I just wanted to.
That means, I'm sorry, it means thank you. Thank you for your attention. Are there any questions?
Trustee Harris, if I may?
Yeah.
So, I thought that was an excellent presentation, by the way, all of you fantastic presentations, thank you for the updates on what happened in Hawaii, which was a super cool trip. I wanted to focus in on the trustee onboarding bit, because I got a bit of experience with that.
Okay.
I, when I, many moons ago, when I became a student trustee, the onboarding process for that, for that role was like a little bit nonexistent, and for, I, I recognize that the, the Board, written in the guidelines, has a responsibility to make sure that trustees are on-boarded in a way in which that they are familiar and can get up to speed. When you hop onto the Board a little bit late in the game, sometimes it feels like you're walking into an, halfway into an episode that you didn't watch, you're like 20 minutes in, you have no idea who the characters are, and you're trying to catch up. Now, I had an advantage, since I already kind of knew the main characters, but getting up to speed can take a little time, especially for a student trustee. So I would recommend highly on focusing on making sure members of the Board get the synopsis, read the Spark Notes, so they can get caught up to that 20-minute mark and they know what's going on, so I completely agree, fantastic point.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, yeah, that was, that was interesting, you know, when they talked about it, some of them have that, but I believe those were the appointed seats, that's why I say there's a big difference, you know, in the way they're, they're on government, but I'm sure we could look at that, if, you know, the Board is interested. Again, we're not endorsing anyone, we just want people to know what they're getting into, maybe they may have a change of heart, you know, but anyway, thank you, thank you for that.
I was really proud that our very own President, Dr. Namuwo, was a presenter at this conference, and throughout the time we were there at different luncheons or breakfast events, other trustees from other states would approach us and say, "You guys have a fabulous President, keep him," and I was like, "We are trying to," you know, so thank you, Dr. Namuwo, for, for just, you know, being who you are and being so committed to the success of this institution, thank you.
Can, can we click that one more time? Just one more, just one more time.
I'm throwing it in my head.
So, I don't know if everybody's old enough for that, though.
Hawaii Bible.
Wait.
We're aging ourselves. Nancy, do you know Hawaii? Nope, see? Get up.
What? Sounds, sounds interesting, but.
Oh.
But that's okay. The, the background looks beautiful.
That was back in the 80s. You're eating that whole?
We're eating ourselves.
Nancy, do you know? Nope, see?
Sounds interesting, but... But that's okay. The background looks beautiful.
That was back in the 80s.
There's a few in here that know. Thank you.
Okay, we'll try this again. Item 1.7.2, the Faculty Union Report, Kurt Ward.
Good evening. I don't know if I can follow Hawaii Five-O. And I had to ask myself, there might be a whole generation sitting over here who has no idea. But then somebody remind me, there's a remake out there, so we get to a lot of work. No, as I've stood up over here the last few months, a couple of times, you've heard me refer to the fact that it takes a village to educate a student. And I want to recognize part of that village tonight, and specifically the Facility Services. For those of you who might not recall, I teach in the best place on campus, that's the auto program. Actually, I just have more fun than anybody else. But anyway, on Thursday last, the exhaust system in our biggest shop failed. To give you an idea of what this system does, it handles the exhaust of up to 20 cars at a time, puts it outside so that we can breathe, teach class, not have problems. Facility Services was in the shop within 30 minutes, maybe an hour. And this is not something that you run down to Menards and get new pieces for. This is a big piece. The new piece was installed yesterday, and I'm sure being at the tail end of the semester, probably Pat and Karen are like, great, where are we going to find the money for this one? But here's the good news, we're going to finish that class, and I want you to know, every one of our full-time students is in that lab at some point during the semester, and that classroom and lab is used eight to five, every single day, Monday through Friday. So this is huge. So at the end of the semester, as faculty members, we're going to get credit for getting the class to the goal line, but we couldn't have done it without Facility Services. So thank you, and thank you. To our student government, and I knew you were going to beat me to the punch, but that's all right. I wanted to, from a faculty standpoint, acknowledge your participation in the Student Advocacy Day in Springfield. Not that we got to see you, and we did, but it's really amazing when, and I speak to you, but I speak to all the government, when I'm on a call with my colleagues from other colleges, and they're talking about our student government, that's the impact that you guys made in Springfield. Yes, they want to hear from us, but I'm going to tell you what, they really want to hear from you guys. You made a difference, so hats off, that's just freaking awesome. And to Ryan, yes, you've got a little bit more to do, but on the chance that I'm not here on the 28th, and Ryan, don't feel bad, and I will forget your name, but I will not forget your red car, because I'm an autograph. Hopefully, it goes straighter down the road now than it did before.
It will today after what your guys at the shop did this afternoon, moving the flat tire to the back.
But, you know, we have been blessed, over the last couple of years, to have a long line of really great student trustees, and you have just fallen right in line, and your smiling face is going to be missed. I will remind you, though, that even when you graduate, you can still come back to the auto shop. You'll get that alumni card, that gets you into the auto shop still. So I can continue to see that red car until at some point you retire for something else. And Josh, on the chance that I don't see you, well done, and thank you again. You know, it's not often that we get to see somebody who does such a great job twice. So with that, everybody have a great evening.
Item 1.7.3, the Adjunct Faculty Union Report, Dr. Barbara Wilhen.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight, President Namulow, esteemed board. I'd just like to offer a thanks to all of those on behalf of the Joliet United Adjunct Coalition, and personally, as a former public servant. Thank you to everyone who put themselves out there and ran during all of the elections that we had most recently. It's hard to lose. I've lost before, but I've won before. It's hard to win. You're putting yourself out there, you're giving up your family's time, your time, and it is appreciated by the greater community. To see young people doing that as well is amazing. I teach in the evenings, and when my students, who are often kind of like, I don't know, they're just kind of like the closet children, because they're here at night, they don't get to do all the activities often, when they come to me and they're asking me questions about the student government, and they're giving me input, and I tell them who to go to, it's a really good feeling. Knowing that I can send Ryan an email, and he gets back to me right away with any information that I need for students on their behalf is just amazing. And all of the things that we offer to our students, whether they're in crisis with their housing, with their food, with their emotions, it is just amazing. And every single day, whenever I see different things that we do here, I am amazed personally and so proud to be a part of this community that really does put their students first. So thank you very much for all of that. In terms of the adjuncts ourselves, we are continuing negotiations with our team, and things are going well with that, and so hopefully, we'll be able to get that closed up pretty quickly as well, and I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Item 1.7.4, the JJC Foundation Report, Kristi Mulvey.
Kristi has a report that she's left on your spots. Can you try again? Hello? Now we can hear you. Okay, I'm sorry. I just want to thank you, but my report is actually in front of all of you tonight. I'm calling in from Florida and bringing my mom back home, and I'm here on the meeting, but I did a written report tonight for all of you, and you can read it after the meeting. But here, there's some of the updates that have been going on in my office as far as fundraising and alumni relations. So you can take a look at that report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Kristi, can we leave? Has, you guys sent out the donation for the Crawford's Honor College? Can we leave that for you to get them when you come back?
Sure, thank you.
Dr. Namulow, I'll leave this with you then.
Item 1.7.5, the Building and Grounds Committee Report.
Building and Grounds did not have a meeting this month, and there will be no report. Thank you.
1.7.6, the Board Policy Committee Report, Nancy Garcia-Guian, Diane Harris, and Ryan Queenie.
Yes, so the Board Policy Committee met on April 3rd, Thursday, and we reviewed a few different things that you all will have, that you do have in front of you for first reading and also second reading. For first reading, we can go ahead and answer any questions once we get to the policy component of it, but in front of you for a vote today, we'll have three items for the second reading. 4.2.1, Performance Management, 4.2.2, Internship, and also 4.2.3, Light Alternate Duty Assignments. And that will be up for a vote at this meeting. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.7.7, the Finance Committee Report, trustee Morales and trustee Stamborsky.
Sure, there was no Finance Committee meeting, so we have no report for today. That's coming up in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Item 1.7.8, the Student Trustee Report, trustee Queenie.
Good evening, JJC students, staff, faculty, administration, and board of trustees. My name is Ryan Queenie, my pronouns are they, them, and this is my last time giving the student trustee report. So without delay, let's get started, and as I always do, let's talk about recent campus and community events, starting with the Wandering Feast, which took place on campus on Thursday, March 27th, at City Center. This was a great event that aimed to raise funds for the Culinary Student Scholarships at JJC, and I just want to give a huge thank you and shout out to all of the culinary students and staff and faculty who helped put this event together. It is one of my favorites, so thank you again. Then on Friday, March 28th, Latinos Unidos hosted their Dreaming Under Stars fundraiser gala in Lower J Building, which featured keynote speaker, former student trustee David Lozano, and now township clerk-elect David Lozano as well, as well as a panel of current professionals in our community, including our very own trustee Nancy Garcia-Guian, who was there to speak. Thank you to all of the students and the club advisors who brought this event and put this together for the students, it was a wonderful experience. On Thursday, April 3rd, the DEI Office hosted their community dinner with the theme of building bridges, featuring small business partners through our Entrepreneurship and Small Business Center at JJC City Center Campus. This event had, was very impactful and had lasting remark, or I've lost my place, I'm going to go to the, sorry. On Saturday, Friday, or Saturday, April 5th, JJC Main Campus was home to Discover JJC, and I did actually hear our trustee Broderick was able to attend this event, gave programs, departments, and offices opportunities to showcase the work they do for new and incoming students and community members, to help them kind of make those decisions on where they want to see their path go when they come to JJC. Then on Wednesday, April 9th, Tahani from the CMAS Office hosted the Second Annual National Arab American Heritage Month Celebration in Lower J Building. This event aimed to honor and celebrate the rich culture and history and contribution of Arab Americans. It provided an inclusive space for students and community members to share personal stories, fostering connections and mutual understanding across the wider community. This event also aligned with the 2024 White House Proclamation and 2025 State of Illinois Proclamation recognizing National Arab American Heritage Month in April. Additionally, on Wednesday, April 9th, the Office of Student Activities hosted the Wellness Fair in the C Concourse on Main Campus. This event brought local community partners, nonprofits, and wellness agencies to the campus to showcase some of their services for students and allow them some of that much-needed stress relief halfway through, about this point in the semester when we are, I believe, five weeks out from the end of classes and graduation. Then Latinos Unidos hosted an egg hunt in the Picnic Grove in celebration of Easter coming up, where they were also doing a fundraiser selling, and I meant to bring one up here tonight, but Cas Casarones, eggs, which are eggs full of confetti and glitter.
Cascarones?
Cascarones, thank you, excuse me. It was so much fun, they had students smashing them on each other all over the Picnic Grove. It was a great event. Then today, or on Monday, or, yeah, today on April 16th, the Rally for Justice took place on our campus, which started on H Bridge and gave students an opportunity to protest different social and political issues that are important to them. This event also featured a panel of different professionals in higher education spaces from around our college. Thank you to everybody who organized that, and also, it's been a busy week. Today, the Addictions Counseling Program, along with Heidi Muncy, hosted the Alcohol Awareness Fair in the C Concourse to educate students about the risks of drinking, as well as providing various resources that can help students who may be struggling with alcohol addiction. Now, bear with me for a moment, because I'm going to have us travel back in time to Student Advocacy Day in Springfield, which took place on Wednesday, April 9th, where the community college students descended on Springfield in the Capitol. It was a great opportunity for our students to go talk about key issues impacting community college students, including the Community College Baccalaureate House Bill 3717 and Senate Bill 2482, as well as talking about wraparound support services and continued funding for those for students, as well as continued state funding for the MAP grant for Illinois students. It was wonderful, as the JJC student lobbying team, we set out to meet with several legislators, and we ended up getting the chance to meet with Meg Capel and Erin Gallagher, who is Natalie Manley's legislative assistant. We shared impactful student stories, spoke to the legislators, and I would also, and I'd just like to take a moment to thank our students who went, Brenton Bishop, Michael Perez, Luke Galloway, Wintley Thomas, Wyatt Miller, and Sean Miller. Thank you all for traveling to Springfield and for having these important conversations and sharing your voice. I'd also like to thank Dean Cindy and Amy Dr. Sims for taking the time, getting up way early in the morning to drive down to Springfield, because if any of you have been there from here, you know it's about a two, three-hour drive. So I also just want to quickly share, Latinos Unidos had a chance to travel to the Alache Conference on Friday, April 11th, to share some of their, or, yeah, this, the conference gave the JJC students a chance to share and learn about advocacy, educational opportunities, and network with community leaders, higher education administrators, and other college and university students. Thank you to all who attended and for what you've brought back to JJC from what you've learned. And before we move on, I just want to share a few more pictures with you all tonight. So we have some pictures from the National Arab American Heritage Celebration in the top left, and the two pictures underneath and next to it, and then to the right of that picture in the top corner is me at Pride Prom, which took place this semester with the theme of unity through diversity at Night of Traditions. And then also, in the middle picture, that is at the DEI Dinner with the students who were able to attend. Thank you again for the DEI Office for hosting that and inviting students, it was wonderful. And then I actually got a rare picture with the wonderful assistant of the board, Karen Razak, at the Wandering Feast, and trustee Stamborsky and Maria Ana Rayfac. So now, while we're traveling in time, let's talk about the future and upcoming campus and community events. So there's a lot going on this month, so if you have a chance, I passed out some handouts that have the dates and times for all these events. If you are interested in attending, please feel free to join us, the students and faculty and everybody putting these together would love to have everyone there. It'd be very impactful. So thank you, and yes, we have, and then we also have more events coming up, just a ton of things. Sustainability Union also asked me to give you a quick update tonight, just because it's still Earth Month, just in case you weren't there. And on Tuesday, April 22nd, they will be having the Earth Day Extravaganza on Main Campus, and they will also on Tuesday, April 29th, so one week they'll have the Earth Day Extravaganza, the next week they'll have the Lead Building Tours, starting in A Building on April 29th. And then they also recently had Repair Cafe at Romeo Vale Campus, where they had 100 items brought in and looked at, and of those items, 70% of those items had successful repair rate, and they did this with 28 volunteers, and actually, one of those volunteers in the picture to the right, the bald guy, that's my grandfather, who owned an appliance repair shop in Romeo Vale for 40 years. It was great to get him out there. And then, before we move on, I just want to take a moment to congratulate Maria Ana Rayfac for her nomination for the, nomination for the Dale P. Parnell Faculty Distinction Recognition 2025 Award by the American Association of Community Colleges. And finally, we've reached the end of my report and return to the present moment. And as many of you who are here tonight know, this marks my final student trustee report as the end of my term has arrived, and I'd like to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to everyone who has made this year so incredibly special and impactful. Serving on this board over the last year has been a transformative experience, teaching me lessons I will carry with me for the rest of my life. I've learned patience, especially during times of adversity. This year has brought its share of challenges, but it has taught me how to navigate difficulties with resilience and professionalism, ensuring that my focus remains on the greater good and those I represent. I've also come to understand that being the loudest voice in the room doesn't necessarily make you right. These insights have shaped me in ways I've never anticipated. I want to take a special moment to extend thanks to some of my mentors who are here tonight, and have stood by me over the past year and years while I've been at JJC, to Dr. Sims, Dean Cindy Vasquez Varios, Kelly Rogers Nelli, Dr. Farmer, Dr. Namulow, Dr. Irving, Professor Brennan, Dr. Dr. Irving, Professor Brennan, Dr. Bimfa, Scott Kousler, who's not here tonight, and also Cheryl Havick, who are not here tonight, and so many others. Your unwavering support and wisdom has made all the difference in my journey. If someone had asked me back in 2019, where I saw my Joliet Junior College journey leading, I never would have predicted that I would have had this incredible opportunity to serve as a student leader and student trustee at the nation's first community college. This year has been a gift and one I will always cherish and hold close to my heart. Thank you to my fellow students, peers, and friends who have entrusted me with this role and made this experience so meaningful. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for an unforgettable year. I will always value and appreciate the opportunity I was given. Thank you and good night.
Questions?
Is it too late to ask questions?
No.
So you pointed out your grandfather.
Yes.
He gave me a unique invitation to an event coming up. Tell us what the event is. On May 4th.
Okay, he invited you.
So you're not gonna remind me for a minute?
I'll have to reach out and ask him, I don't, I'm.
Oh, the band, yes.
The Community Band Concert at Joliet Junior College. Please take the time and come listen to it, they have some incredible pieces this year. May 4th, theater on Main Campus, it's a great event, my, like, my whole family's in the band, so I'll be there. Come check it out, it's a great experience. Thank you for reminding me, yes.
So he did invite you, huh?
No, he did, I just really bad remembered. It's one of those events that, oh, it shows up on the calendar, I'll be there.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.9, the president's report.
Chairman Bazinski, thank you so much. You know, just, just want to extend, of course, my congrats along with everyone else, but Ryan, you know, the standing room, standing ovation that you received was so well-deserved. I think about kind of the last three student trustees, and I won't go on and on and on and embarrass all of you, but certain words come to mind when I think of, you know, trustee Ellis, I think of strength, and that was part of her leadership here. When I think of trustee Stamborsky, the word integrity comes to mind, and when I think of trustee Queenie and the mark you've left here, it's kindness, it's kindness. So, you know, on behalf of the college community, thank you for your incredible service, and I would argue that I feel like our student trustees give us more than we give you. We've all learned so much from you, so again, congratulations to you. I do want to extend a congrats, preliminary congratulations, I suppose an official congratulations can come after April 22nd, to our elected trustees, who as trustee, Chairman Bazinski referenced, trustee-elect Elaine Bottomley, re-elected trustees Maureen Broderick and trustee Garcia-Gian, welcome back and welcome to the board, to those of you. You know, as trustee Morales was sharing her experience at GLI, it was a really special time for me, being back in my homeland, as I referenced, and just to clarify, the example she used was not JJC, everyone.
It was not.
It was hilarious to see the 20 CEOs in the room be very awkward when these case studies were presented, so I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, no, it was not.
Just a quick snapshot of enrollment, hasn't really changed, you know, the numbers are pretty much what they will be for the rest of the semester, we remain up in tuition credit, and I think I've explained some of the other numbers over the last couple of months. As trustee Queenie noted, we had just an incredible time, I want to offer just a couple of tidbits, I'm gonna fill in some, some information, 350 tickets sold in just 10 minutes. So just think about that real quick, 350 tickets sold in just 10 minutes. Last year, the Culinary Arts Department awarded over $50,000 in scholarships, a lot of that revenue comes from wandering feast and others who experience both restaurants at the City Center Campus, so if you're out there, if you've supported the Culinary Arts Department, know that it's, the contributions go directly to students to support their experience there at the City Center. I had a chance to go to a number of athletic events, don't have them all in here, but shout out to women softball there, and just an image of me and Natalie Manley, you know, Natalie continues to be a passionate advocate for higher education, for community colleges, and as Kelly Roderick Tinnelli referenced, really a passionate advocate for our neurodiverse students. Want to give a quick shout out to trustee Harris, who I imagine will have this in her presentation, trustee updates. She was a guest speaker at TPUSA recently and shared a lot about politics, her political philosophy, her political journey as well, so want to thank her for accepting the invitation to present to one of our student clubs. This has been a very, very busy week, chairman, a very, very busy month, rather. I'll just let you know, if the cabinets, eyes, eyelids are droopy, they've all flown in from Nashville today, with the exception of Judy Connolly, who landed at midnight-ish, but the rest of them, they all flew in from Nashville, where you'll hear, we had an incredible time at the American Association of Community Colleges. We've all been very active in the community. I accepted an invitation from Howard Wright, Christopher and Kevin Parker to speak at their first, their inaugural education night, where I had a chance to, to speak with about 15 or 20 students who are just finding their way in the world. So it was late at night, but it was time well-spent and offered all of them a personal tour of JJC if they find it, find the courage to walk through that door. Now, as trustee Morales shared, I, I did have a chance to not only present, but share part of my culture as well, and I've forced some of you through this native Hawaiian, traditional Hawaiian greeting, and at some point, I will force all of you to do that. But, you know, I had the opportunity to just share that with the room, so imagine a room of 150 people who've been sitting pretty much all day, well, they all got up and participated in this forehead-to-forehead greeting, sharing the breath of life, I thought it was a really, really powerful moment, and really thankful that the message that I shared around the culture of innovation, along with Christie Wellington Baker, was so well-received. I thought, I thought JJC really did, did well. Want to share some pictures, some of these are on social media, had a chance to share, and you'll see, each of our trustees had a lot to share with the room. Each of them shared, you know, their journey, their, their experience as trustees, some of the things that they've led, whether it be the policy committee, serving as vice chair, as ACCT, ICCTA rep, and the challenges that, challenges and successes. So I thought it was incredible and thanked them for sharing to that enormous room. I do want to point out one thing, and, and some of you have maybe seen this on social media here, but the trustees got a chance to meet my parents, who are a really big part of my story, whose struggle and sacrifice really gave me and my brother everything, and so, you know, you'll see this in my weekly report, or trustees, you saw this in my weekly report, as donor dinner, they are supporters of the Nmulo family-endowed scholarship for first-generation students, they are the inspiration of the scholarship, of course. Also, that was a really special time.
Food was good, too.
Yeah, the food was delicious as well. There we are, hard at work, about 150 trustees and case studies that we're looking at. I did accept an invitation, actually, first things first, so, you know, accreditation is a big part of what we do. I've convinced both Karen Kissel and Dr. Farmer to join Dr. Gray and Dr. Osswinkel as peer reviewers for the Higher Learning Commission. What that means is they will, very soon, travel to other colleges and universities to accredit other colleges and other universities and participate in those accreditation-related activities. The Higher Learning Commission is one of six accrediting bodies, it is by far the largest accrediting body. Just to give you an example, there are 1,500 peer reviewers across the country. I visited with another accrediting body, they bragged about having 27 peer reviewers. The Higher, the Higher Learning Commission is really the gold standard, and I want to commend them for accepting that challenge to become peer reviewers, to understand the accreditation process and all of its related activities. The images you're seeing over to the right, I accepted an invitation to be on the main stage in Orlando at E-Live. To the left is Ryan Tubbs, he's the Senior Vice President of Client Services. What you don't see is the audience of about 5,000 people. We got a chance to not only tell the story of JJC's journey from one ERP to another, but Dr. Farmer and I especially had a chance to advocate behind the scenes, meeting with the CEO, the COO, and other executives to advocate for the level of service we need to get us across the finish line and off planet Earth and into the cloud. It was an incredible experience, really, and, you know, this, this picture here was the team. You know, on stage, I made it a point to acknowledge all of the efforts and activities, I mean, all of the things our employees have done to get us from one ERP to another has been nothing short of extraordinary, and that got the biggest applause, by the way, of my whole presentation on the panel. So here they all are, and it's cross-functional, it's not just IT, it's admissions, it's financial aid, across the organization, they were there to maximize the support we get from Alusia. Chairman, as I mentioned, we just flew back from Nashville. I'll, I think I have a picture on the next slide here, but I just want to give a quick shout out, in addition to the cabinet that was there, I want to give a quick shout out to Dr. Erica Reyes. So Dr. Reyes did a presentation, standing room only, and the topic was this concept of we, this concept that we're connected, and it was really an incredible session where she challenged emerging leaders to advocate for themselves, to advocate for the supports they need, and a really beautiful thing happened, where one audience participant member essentially communicated their, her struggles in not getting the job, not feeling the support, and it was beautiful to see the entire room rally around her, from presidents, vice presidents, faculty, and others really rally in support of her, and after the meeting, well, Dr. Reyes was swarmed with questions, that's any indication of how well it was received, but also that, that young emerging professional was swarmed as well with offers to serve as mentors, so it was a really beautiful moment, and just want to give a shout out to Dr. Reyes, and she'll be on the next slide here. Was also joined by Tiana there, you'll see me holding the award, chairman, as you know, I was a finalist for the CEO of the Year Award, I see that as an incredible affirmation, and, you know, just validating some of the work we're doing here, to be one of the four finalists among all 1,000 community colleges really meant a lot to me, and the fact that Tiana was able to join me meant a lot as well. Ryan mentioned Maria, Maria joined our table as well, Maria's over on the left-hand side, of course. Ryan referenced this community event, thank you for the trustees who had the time to join us, I thought it was a really beautiful event, I think I've got a slide with all of the different community partners here. It was really not only a night that celebrated our community partners, but it was a night that celebrated the Entrepreneurial Business Center as well, something that is becoming, I'm, I'm having a tough time being out in the community and not hearing about the EBC. I mean, we have so many businesses that have emerged from this incubator that we, as an institution, are supporting. It's really an incredible thing. So, there were three businesses that were recognized, that again, emerged from the EBC, so Fusion Natural Hair and Braid Academy, Learn With Me Daycare, and Beans and Bites, all just a celebration of entrepreneurship, and really a celebration of what EBC does to strengthen the communities in and around, the communities we serve. We had over 500 check-ins at the Joliet Region Career Fair, another incredible event, I believe we had over 150 employers, and you could certainly feel the energy. I want to give a shout out to our four diamond, or top-tier sponsors of this event, they, along with the staff, made it an incredible success, and their tables were right up front. We've got the Hollywood Casino of Joliet, this is their second year sponsoring that event, Westside Children Therapy, Dooley Health and Care, and Difuku Intro Logistics America, I want to thank them for their support of this incredible event. You heard Luke earlier, of course, and I just want to acknowledge Luke's presentation, Immigration in America, Past and Present, which will be available, download, I'm not sure where it's available, actually, on YouTube, Luke, YouTube. Really incredible thing that Luke was able to do, this was the first student-led scholarly presentation, just want to commend Luke for taking on that challenge, and when the recording does come out, we'll be sure to send it out. Close to the end here, just want to give an employee spotlight, as I tend to do. You know, at JJC, we care deeply about emerging leaders, we want to give them every opportunity to succeed, and perhaps that's where some of Erica's inspiration for her research and her presentation came from. So these three individuals here are part of a new leadership program called the Executive Fellows Leadership Program at JJC. Dr. Reyes really paved the way as Dr. Farmer's Executive Vice President Fellow, and has been working with Dr. Farmer in this role for about a year now. So as Dr. Reyes blazed the trail here, the president decided to take a good idea and borrow it and copy it, so we have two new presidential fellows, and I'd like to introduce them to the college community, Fatina Sayeg, currently in the EBC Center, and Katie Smith, our manager of communications, will be doing work, project-based work out of the president's office, very similar to the work that Dr. Reyes is doing. And with that, chairman, I'll yield back, thank you. There's the mahalo. Trustee Harris, there you go.
Item 1.8, closed session number one, we will not be having tonight, we will have closed session number two later on this evening. Item 1.10, 1.101, approval of minutes of the special meeting held on March 5th, 2025?
Second.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Stain.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.10.2, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on March 12th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Question or input? In regards to, under the 1.2 communication, neither I nor trustee Lee refused to cooperate with the investigation. Legal is the one that took the position that said we, that he did not want us to, it's not that we refused, legal advice was not to be involved, so it's not that we refused, just to clarify that.
And you're looking at 1.10.2, is that correct?
That is, communication.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.11, the approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion carries.
Item 1.12, the approval of consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to have two things pulled. 3.1 and 4.2.1.
Ready to vote, yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Stanborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
First-pold item 3.1, the approval to pay the listing of bills for the period ending March 31, 2025 as presented. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. The reason I bring this up is, of course, last month I had brought up about how we paid legal services. I'm looking at almost $25,000 on this bill, this bill to be paid. And I'm still trying to figure out what the general work is, what the retainer would have been versus us paying hourly. So I'm going to bring that back because I am concerned about that, that it was mentioned by Matthew, I think was the one that took your place last month, right?
Matt Campbell, yes.
Pardon me?
Matt Campbell.
Yeah, Matt. And he said we're paid hourly. I think we need to look into that because even when I looked at the agreement with Robin Schwartz, it would have been $750 plus, that would include all of meetings and everything. So I'm just wondering, how can we cut expenses for legal? So I think we need a definition of general work, what it's inclusive of, so that we make the decision, because this changes as of 8:30 of '25. It goes into a new one on 9/1 of, that we could do the budgeted ones of the retainer, either the full or the hybrid instead of the hourly rate. And then I did have another question, too, in regards to the point of difference with our lobbyists. Normally, we had paid $5,000 a month, and I know we agreed to the $120 if I'm not mistaken for them. My question and concern is, what have they done for us on the national side? Because everybody that I've talked to in our level with the ICCTA, they only have a lobbyist that does the state level. What have they done for us on the national level?
Chairman, I'll take this one and then just put Kelly Roder tonelli on deck here. You know, one of the things I had a conversation with, so, and I will get to your question, trustee Broderick. Point of difference has been very active for us, and as you've highlighted, the previous lobbyists did not have a federal presence. The timing of us bringing on a lobbyist that had a federal presence, considering some of the uncertainty that we've experienced over the last few months, has really been perfect. They've been actively engaged with our federal delegation. So I'm going to tee up Kelly Roder tonelli to provide some additional detail.
Absolutely, thank you. And I would like to echo Dr. Nemo's sentiments. This is the first time that the college has entered into an engagement with a lobbyist that provides those federal services. And while our engagement with them has only been a few months, we've seen dividends. Just from a practical standpoint, I meet with them once a week. We have state representatives from the firm as well as federal representatives from the firm. And they give us, forgive me, and I share with my colleagues here, anything from its site when congressionally-directed spending funds might be open to prep us for that. In fact, we just did one for Durbin and one is coming up for Congresswoman Underwood, as well as just making sure that that information is on file. So when they are out on the Hill, they're actively talking to our legislators and their staffers on our behalf. Right now, we're focused on grant funding, but they have been very good about giving us connections to the Department of Education. Again, very helpful, given all of the evolution, I'll say, on the landscape in Washington, DC.
So they're identifying us when they're out there as JJC?
Very specifically.
And what our intent is, what we're looking for?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's good, thank you. Because I was wondering, because I know we said $12,000 a month, which would have been $120. So that's what I was asking. And then the last one I had. The other question I had was on Valdez Engineering. It's architectural design services. Aren't we using Leggett, or have we opted to go with them for another reason?
Sorry. So I believe we are using Leggett for the comprehensive overview for the college, but the other company is for the Crawford Honors College.
Well, that's what it's for.
Correct.
Okay, because it just said for our, for the existing library.
Yeah.
So that's what it's going into that?
That's correct.
Okay, then that's the explanation.
Okay, no problem.
Any other discussion, or are we ready to vote?
I think the timing of the lobbyist was excellent, Dr. Nemo. That was, that was good. That was very good. It was wonderful, and I'll actually even go further. I was actually in communications with the Point of Difference Strategies lobbyist when I was going down to Springfield, talking with them and talking some of the services they could help us with when we were down there.
We were ready to vote.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stanborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.
Notion carries.
Second-pold item 4.2.1, which is Policy 02.01.16, Performance Management. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
And my question is, under paragraph four, it says, "All employees should receive performance reviews." And it says, "such as goals, job duties, performance development, expectations." So we're covering everyone, anyone that's under a contract? Because that's what I, when I see all employees, I'm thinking it's everyone, it's the broad spectrum of everyone. Is that correct or incorrect?
So let me put Judy Connolly on deck here, trustee Broderick. So we have, as you know, many collective bargaining agreements with our unions.
Right.
We're in full compliance with all of those in regards to evaluations, any of those sorts of things. There is a segment of our population, of course, our employee population, who are non-union. And so over the last several years, we've instituted essentially a merit-based evaluation system that awards percentage increases based on performance evaluation. So just invite Judy to share more.
Yes, because there's varying requirements with the collective bargaining agreements and the union, non-union, this policy is more of a philosophy kind of statement about performance management here at Joliet Junior College. So it is a little bit more broadly written. And again, just sort of saying, yes, all employees are entitled to a performance review, feedback from their supervisors, whether they get into the level of written goals or not written goals that's determined in certain areas. So I look at this as a little bit more of a broad statement. And then if you look at the collective bargaining agreements, you'll see things that might be aligned with that, but maybe more specific.
No, I understand the difference between that. I'm just looking at all employees. So does it include all cabinet, president, and everything? Because you guys aren't union. So I'm just looking to see if this is all inclusive. If that be the case, okay, then I'm fine with it. But I just want to make sure that we're not removing somebody and not have the language in there of who we're removing or not.
Yes. I mean, this one does not specify non-union, so it's written broadly enough to, again, be a philosophy sort of statement for the college regarding performance management.
Thank you.
Any other questions or input?
No.
We're ready to vote on that one, please.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stanborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.1, first reading of board policies. Policy 01.45.05, electronic attendance at meetings.
I need two seconds. I do like the fact that you have to see yourself on, so I think that's critical.
Yeah.
It's just like the students had to do during COVID.
Yeah.
They had to be seen by the teacher, so I think this is a good plus.
Yep.
I can go ahead and mention a little bit more, but yes. So for this particular policy, the goal is that we are encouraging the interaction and the actual participation of trustees by being on camera. Of course, if they need to step away, that makes sense, they can definitely step away and let us know in the chat, so that way we know that they're stepping away, but they will come back, so that way we can go ahead and be respectful and make sure that we're still having them participate in different ways by having them provide feedback when appropriate. So this particular policy adds that, that language about being on camera, being attentive, and being able to participate fully in the board meeting, even though they might not be present. Any additional questions on that one? Well, if you all have some questions, we can definitely address them, okay? Let's move on to the next one.
Before you do, so I know this one's regarding the board members. I'm sure we have a policy somewhere about, like, employees, staff members, if they get on, they should probably have to turn on their cameras also. I know that's not up for discussion today, but just, you know, I would have to see if there is a policy. I'm sure there is, but I'd like that also to apply for staff, that they have to turn their cameras on.
We can go ahead and take a look. That might be something per department.
Right.
And again, that would be connected to being an active participant, but we can go ahead and take a look.
Thank you.
The next policy is 4.1.2, which is Actual Policy Number 02.01.12, Confidentiality.
So for this one, we just, it was one of the policies that was up for revision. So for this one, we didn't make major modifications, we just cleaned the language a little bit. But it still establishes that certain type of information should remain confidential. That means that it cannot be disclosed to other entities if they're not directly working on a particular case or a particular, any information shouldn't be shared with other people that do not need that information, essentially.
Agenda item 4.1.3, which is Policy 02.04.19, fringe benefits for full-time administrators and professional staff.
For this one, we just cleaned the language a little bit. We modified some of the information of making sure that we added language specifically about the FBLA, that is the Illinois Family Veritment Act, that is consistent with the policy at the state level. And also, we added some information in the last page about optional benefits that are paid by the employee, including critical illness insurance and also pet insurance as well.
Next agenda item 4.1.4, which is Policy 13.06.00, purchases from federal grant funds.
For this particular policy, last time that it was reviewed was in November 2019. It was part of the policies that was up for revision this time around. For this particular policy, we just modified the language slightly, but the policy still provides clarity about what are some of the purchases that can be, that can be made with the federal grant funds. We do have a procedure attached to this with additional information.
Do you have that procedure for us to read by any chance?
At this second, I do not, but we can go ahead and take a look.
So I have asked this at every single meeting, that if there is a procedure attached, especially if it's a new procedure that is being added to a policy, that you would provide it for us? And yet, there are, besides the first one, both of the policies have very minimal changes, but there are procedures added which we are not allowed to read, and therefore, I will be voting no for all three policies that you have continuously added procedures to that you do not allow us to read.
Okay. As a reminder, this one is up for first reading, so it will not be voted on at this meeting, as a reminder. Thank you.
So by next week, can we have the procedure so that I can look at whether or not I would like to vote on all three of those?
Let me take a look, and let me go ahead and see what we can find. Thank you.
It should be sent to everyone, technically, as we're all voting for these procedures in complete blindness with no transparency.
Question. In regards to your policy meeting, I know Ryan and I have talked about it after the meeting. Can you possibly have the items that are going to be discussed in your meeting, so we could read them and see them? You know, that they're on the table so we can see them instead of us having to go and look through our laptop or our iPhone? That way, we're seeing what you're doing to it? And it would be easier?
You're asking for a printed version of the policy.
Whatever one you're talking about, yeah, so that we, so anybody that's visiting can come. I mean, maybe they don't have the luxury that we do of seeing it on our iPhone, but it would be nice to have it instead of having to go to the iPhone.
Let me clarify quickly, just with you, when you say have a printed copy of the procedure, you're talking at the policy committee meeting?
Right, the policy.
Not the regular board meeting?
At the policy, right.
At the policy.
That's who I was referring to.
But regardless, we can all be emailed a procedure before the meeting so that we could read it, so that we could all be prepared for the meetings.
Would it be a procedure that would be emailed, though? Because wouldn't that be departmental and throughout the college, not a board-related item?
If we have to vote on something in this book, they cannot implement that procedure if we do not vote on it. Therefore, regardless of if they can change the procedure or not, if I am voting on adding something, I'd like to see it and read it.
One thing that I would like to caution us is getting involved in the day-to-day operations instead of being focused at the policy level. Thank you.
And plus, we're voting on the policy.
Yep.
We're a policy governing board, so that's what we do.
I would just like to remind everyone that when I was on the policy committee behind closed doors, the way that they would like to hide things from Maureen is they would say, "Let's just put it in the procedure." And they continuously try not to hand us the procedures. So I would really, for transparency purposes for the college, I really just don't understand why it's so hard for you all to give procedures that we could read if we're going to pass the policy with nothing added to the policy but a procedure.
Okay, that was all of the items.
Agenda item 5.1, Reports, Representative to the ICCTA, ACCP, trustee Harris.
We're there already. Okay.
I'm sorry, I know we're two hours early, but. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. Okay. Clip? Yeah, thank you. The ICCTA gathered in Lisle on March 14 and 15. Some members had additional engagements on the 15th, so they were not there. The meeting focused less on internal board matters this particular time and more on the federal level issues, particularly, particularly development at the U.S. Department of Education and concerns about potential restructuring and dismantling. We did have our roundtable discussions. We, discussions centered around how community colleges might respond if indeed we were to lose funding. About one-third of the attendees advocated for pushback. Others emphasized being proactive, building relationships with legislators to stay ahead of the upcoming changes. The update on the DEI right now is every college is taking measures to comply. The main focus is that we all, all the colleges should remain compliant. That's where the major focus is, to stay compliant so that we will at least continue to meet the needs of our students. I believe we should focus on being proactive. That was my take, being, focus on being proactive, identifying our college's unique needs, and preparing for a potential shift in responsibilities of the state level. The goal is to ensure we're ready to protect and advance our student outcomes. The update on the Department of Education, that, let's see. Yeah, that will be discussed on the 21st. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. The information on the Department of Education has been funneled to the colleges, and so that information is being presented mainly being transparent. So whatever information that we have had, the college has, has made sure that we've been transparent, so we all should know that. It's basically, we're just following the orders of the Basically, we're just following the orders of the Department of Education, and we're, hopefully, ACC will continue to provide information as to the route that we should take. But again, the compliance factor is basically where we need to be. We also had a legislative update on H.B.L. 3717, which is the back to our degrees. Guest speaker was Tracy Katz-Muehl. She's a state representative for the 57th District. That's near Arlington Heights and Glencoe in that area. But anyway, she filed that on February 7th. And then after much conversation, the bill is now in the House Rules Committee, and so March 21st, there should be more information, because that's when they will be meeting again. So now is a crucial time to start some outreach campaigns, maybe writing letters, making phone calls, and contacting the legislators to advocate for our community colleges. So again, April 21st is the next House session, so we'll see what happens at that time. Community College Month, of course. We're in Community College Month. It's to honor all of the community colleges, and we also want to announce the nominees for the 2025 Equity and Diversity Award. Illinois Central College, and of course, Joliet Junior College is on that list again, and Oakton College. Congratulations and thank you, Kelly, for getting those nominations, and we really appreciate that. And I'm sure we'll have some strategies for lobby days when it gets close to that time. We can wait on that, too. So final reflections, just let's stay focused on our core mission, educating and supporting our students. Remember to set aside the personal differences, collaboration is key, and we will continue to remain compliant. And I believe that's all I have for ICCT. Yeah, that was it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, since you guys weren't there on Saturday, can I?
No, you can have your trustee report if you'd like to. 5.2 trustee updates. Start going this way, trustee Garcia again.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming to the meeting and being here and participating. I do not have any updates at this time. Thank you.
Trustee Stamboreski?
Hi, I'd like to say thank you to the JJC community. Along with my good friend, trustee Queenie here, this is my last time sitting on the Board of Trustees. I said that once before. I mean it this time. This will be my last time sitting here, and I wanted to give somebody, everybody, something to kind of percolate on before leaving here tonight. Back in September, way back, several months ago, I thought very, very long and hard about applying myself to be on this board for reasons that are not entirely out of comprehension. I really percolated and thought in it and went back and forth, and some words popped into my mind that I read a long time ago, and I don't recall exactly where they're from, but it comes down to something along these lines is, although all that we have built does not collapse when bad people do bad things. It's when good people stand by and do nothing. For me, a long time ago, I spoke about how I'd like to sit under, I would like to plant a tree under which, whose shade I would not be able to enjoy. And serving on this board, my goal has always been to do best by those around me in the JJC community. Home is where the heart is, and my heart belongs here. So, once again, I'd like to thank everybody, everybody in the audience that came out here tonight, staff, administration, and the Board of Trustees for having me. I do appreciate you all. Thank you.
Trustee?
All right, last time I'm going to get to do this, so I'm watching my time. All right, so I just want to say again, thank you to everybody for the last year and for everything. Again, as I always do, thank you to the students who are here tonight at the board meeting and who's been here for the whole time. I know this, we're not, it's not eight o'clock, nine o'clock, so we're doing good. But thank you for coming to this board meeting and every board meeting that you've been to. Your support is just, there's not words, just thank you and beyond thank you. And then just quickly, I wanted to say congratulations to everybody who ran in the last election and whether you did or didn't get elected, congratulations. It's not an easy time, there's a lot that goes into it. I know, as me and trustee Broderick have talked over this, there's a lot of different behind-the-scenes pieces that occur, and I just would like to thank everybody for being willing to be engaged and be a part of this wonderful board. And, you know, again, this has just been a true honor, and it's going to be missed. Tonight has been the biggest emotion. I felt bittersweet, because I'm going to miss this, and I'm excited to see what comes for the future. So I have technically a minute and 55 seconds, so I can keep going, but I'm going to yield back my time. Thank you again, and yes.
Trustee Morales?
Thank you. I want to also thank everybody for being here tonight. I'm going almost, I think this, God bless you, this year, I think I'm going to be going on my 10th year serving, and it's been an honor for me to continue to serve for 10 years as a public servant in this capacity. But I remember what motivated me to run for office, and it was my experience of having gone to school here, but also having worked here. And as a student, you see one perspective, but when you work here, you see a different perspective, right? And they're both very rewarding, but that motivated me to run for office a long time ago, and we have to pay attention to the small things we do with our students every single day and be intentional about, you know, how we package that financial aid, you know, for them, how we advise our students, or when they're looking for mentorship or help or guidance or counseling, that we're there and we show up and we step up our game for students. So, you know, I just, every time I go to a conference, I learn something new, and I think, well, I don't want to get distracted by, you know, other things that are going on, maybe at the board level or other situations, and it's easy to get distracted, but just focusing back on what is my purpose and what do I want, what outcomes do I want to see? Have my 10 years been effective, you know? And that will be measured by the KPIs, by our, you know, outcomes that, you know, are students graduating, are they graduating period or are they transferring as opposed to just dropping? Are they getting employment, you know, in the areas that they went to school for? You know, are we moving our GED students into, you know, college level, our non-traditional students? You know, how are we marketing them to get them to come here? We're facing very challenging times with this new federal administration. It's a lot of uncertainty right now, but one thing for sure is that we will be here, we will stay strong, and we'll continue to serve our students, and I will continue to lead and govern with, in an ethical manner and just with a stronger focus, that's all. So, thank you so much, I appreciate that. And I, it's been an honor for me to work with both Josh and Ryan. Thank you, guys. A lot of times, you teach us, you know, and we're always constantly learning, so thank you for your leadership as well, and it's been an honor to work with both of you. Thank you.
Trustee Broderick?
Thank you. Well, I'd like to welcome Elaine. Congratulations, and congratulations to Nancy on your election. I know it's not certified yet until April 22nd, but it's looking good. Couple of things I wanted to mention that I had attended, which was the Discover JJC, which I thought was great and wonderful, very well laid out, a lot of interest came to that. But I want to give DeAndre Butler a big kudos. Is he still here? Am I seeing DeAndre there? Thank you. I was at Joliet Central yesterday for the JJC Pathways to Success, and they had 150 families, I heard, that signed up. I stopped in to see what it was all about, and it was about admissions, enrollment, dual credit, scholarships, financial aid, honors college, you name it, they had it. They had 20 tables set up. And DeAndre, I thought you did a fantastic job with how it was laid out and everything, so kudos to you. You're welcome. And then, just to make it understanding, Make It Illinois is the campaign that is what we're working on for the ICCTA. That is where the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, in partnership with the Illinois Innovation Network, is leading a statewide campaign to connect individuals with advanced manufacturing careers. And they have it set up that all community colleges have access to the brand toolkit and are welcome to co-brand their programs and Make It in Illinois to amplify it. So it's to help the pathways to get more interested in their degrees, their paths for what they're going to go into. And it's definitely talent pipeline growth, education alignment, and perception shift to let them know what they've got. And that was mentioned at our Saturday meeting, which I thought was a great thing for them to talk about and do. And the last thing I want to mention is Happy Easter to all of you, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Lee?
Congratulations to the winners, which she just loves, so congratulations.
Trustee Harris?
Oh, yeah. Okay, yes, congratulations to the re-elected individuals and to our new trustee, Lady Bottomley. I look forward to serving with you. And congratulations to Dr. Namorow for being four out of 1,000. To be commended, to be commended. Congratulations on that. And to Josh, it's been a pleasure, pleasure serving with you, and as well, trustee Queenie, the pleasure to serve with the both of you. Very young, energetic, just keep up the good work and you have a great future ahead of you. And last but not least, I did have an opportunity to speak to one of the student groups here. It's called TPUSA. Dr. Wisdom, who's over at, I guess, the Philosophy Department, invited me to speak to the group, and I was glad to come out. There were several students, and they were very engaging and asking questions, so I enjoyed that. Basically, the TPUSA is an organization, I guess, one of many on campus here for the students, where they empower students from coast to coast, because this one is all over the junior colleges, to rise up and support Americans, America's founding principles. So I enjoyed that, and I'm glad that the students did, too. So that's, that's it, and I echo trustee Broderick. Happy Easter.
Thank you. Brings us to 5.3, the Chair's Report. I'm looking forward to two weeks from now when we actually seat the new board members and get ready to start another year of working together. I think tonight actually might have somewhat showed that we can have a professional, normal board meeting, and we're looking forward to having lots of them in a row now. We do welcome Elaine. I know you had a lot of contentious moments over the last couple of weeks. They're not over. Trustee Stamboreski? I'm just amazed that you still think you're in control. You may end up somewhere on this board again. I told you, you can go for the three-peat, elected by, elected by the students, elected by the board, and elected by your community, so don't, don't say no. I don't know if anyone's ever done that before, but just keep an open mind, and you never know when you'll get tapped on the shoulder. To all the staff who's been working real, real hard behind the scenes, thank all of you. You make this actually an easy spot for us to be. We're not really dealing with problems at the college level, so I thank everyone here for that. With that said, I'm going to conclude my Chair Report. We are going to go into a closed session. After the closed session, we will not be returning to do any board activities, so some of you are free to go.
It's still daylight.
Okay, you can stay.
It's early.
I know. So item six, at this time, the Chair requests a motion to enter into closed session under 2C1 and 2C2. So moved.
Second.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski? Trustee Stamboreski?
We're doing a vote.
Trustee Stamboreski?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, the Chair calls for a motion to return to public session? So moved.
Okay, trustee Stamboreski?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick? Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris? Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This time, the Chair calls for a motion and a second adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries.